My name is David Sadowski. Civil engineer, I own the company Sadowski Engineering, located in Clinton, Massachusetts. Along with me is the owner of the property. Hughes has owned the property since the year 2001. What we're looking to do is construct a 24 by 24 garage. Actually have a photo of back in the day when there was horse and wagon. You can see the existing garage on the property we're looking to construct. Currently-
So that was right on the same photo one that happened to whatever in the front line of-
Yes, it was. Currently, the parking that's going on right now is actually in the layout of Harvard Road. Harvard Road's a 50 foot wide-
Taking?
So after the edge of the pavement, all that's actually in the roadway area. And what Mr. Hughes would like to do is get his cars off the street and get them into a garage. There are significant wetlands on the property with the biography. Our lot right now is within the 100 foot buffer. Excuse me, the garage itself is within the 100 foot buffer. And also, we have an inner repairing zone from perennial stream. So if we were to extend the garage out to the proper setback, we'd be working in that 100 foot buffer area. We'd be creating a driveway. We'd actually have more impervious area we'd be creating. If we were allowed to put the garage in the location where it was back in the day when there was horse and wagon, it would not disturb the area of the lot. Would not create more impervious area, and we'd be able to get cars off the roadway into the garage itself.
So how many cars are currently on the roadway?
Two. There's two, and it's gonna be a two-car garage.
Yeah, have you rented this for that conservation?
We see them Thursday night.
So what's the lot size?
The lot is an acre, a little bit over an acre. There's an existing septic field up in here that's got a stone wall on it. And there's also a septic tank and a pump chamber located in this area just outside the 100 foot buffer. There's a shed into the back. So the only place that the garage could actually go would be somewhere within the 100 foot buffer. And it would just create more disturbance to the land as it is now.
So the wet is on this side?
The wet is here, here's the W for the wetland flags. And here's the perennial stream bank. And then the 100 foot buffer zone is here.
Where's the well? Where's the well for the house, Mr.?
Right here.
This is the house right here, the well is right here, on the front, very front of the house.
So we have a plan to show hay bale and silt fence over here that will be presented to conservation in this area here. The building will be roughly 60 feet off the wetland, 72 feet away from the perennial stream, and it's 150 feet from our other buffer line. But it makes a natural choice to put it where it is because that's where it existed back in the day. And also, the way the driveway ends right there, with minimal disturbance, we'll be able to drive right into the building.
So is the house the same distance from the road, closer or further away?
The house is actually touching on the road line.
Okay, so this will be set back from where the house is?
Yes.
Slightly.
Yes, but it would be. And there's a series of walls all through that area that were set up that connected from the house all the way over to the front of where the garage floor was back in the day.
So those are existing walls?
Yes, they are. Yeah, the grade falls about three feet on either side of the wall. So if the garage was built up, it would work perfect. Probably in the old days when they had hay and stuff, right out the backside, the way the grade goes, you could just bring a wagon right up and roll it right in. And again, the house was built in 1811.
Cars driving down from Harvard Road into Bolton sightwise, wouldn't cause any problems?
It's pretty open. It's pretty open. Actually, you can see the backyard coming from way up on the hill. And the thing is, where the edge of the road is and the car, the way that it sticks back, those would be ends of the garage itself. And the garage would actually offer some cover during snow season. Also, rain won't be getting on the vehicles either, that's the reason for the garage also. So we're really limited by wetlands and topography on this.
And you to that site versus the area in general?
Is this a single-story garage?
It's a one-and-a-half story with storage above.
Storage?
Yeah, so it's not as full. Right, but it'll have a little bit of storage. The reasoning for that is I got a fieldstone basement, and it's, you know, I just gotta get-
It must be flooded all the time.
I used to know people who lived there 20, 30 years ago. And she was an architect. And she used to complain about, you know, getting up in the morning and getting the water bubbling as it ran through the foundation.
It's been a challenge, but we put front drains in. We've got all that under control, that fieldstone, you get them, you know, it's just moist.
And through the chair, it's a unique situation. There's not many places where there used to be a barn or garage we're looking to reconstruct. It's not like we're setting a precedent for other people in town. And it's actually alleviating traffic by pulling the cars off the street itself into a vehicle.
Certainly, that gives me much more safe option than leaving along the street. Or however close to the street.
And even when you're backing up out of the garage, you're gonna have more awareness because when you're backing up where you're there, I mean, you're into the pavement of the roadway. At least when you're coming out of the garage, you'll have some time to look in. This area is pretty well cleared, and it's, other than the building there, that's cleared up to the intersection. It's a nice straightaway. It's a Worcester County Highway layout from back in the day.
What is the pavement width?
The dash line's the edge of Harvard Road.
Do you have a dimension on it, or just curious?
It's the scale, I don't have my scale with me, but I think it's 28 feet. Jack probably-
I mean, it's fairly typical of what's in town.
Is this a 20 scale?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a 20 scale, but we'll use 10. See, it's like 26 feet.
Okay, so how far is the front of the garage from the-
The front of the garage, the edge of pavement's gonna be, let's see, I guess it's like 18 feet.
Should get off the road.
Currently now, when I have the cars in the driveway, the plows and all that, it's a pretty dicey situation.
And if it was to go any further into the lot, the way that the stone wall is with the three feet, there'd be a lot of fill-in and other things that would have to be brought in to carry that natural gray that he has going.
How about the depth, does it need to be 24 feet or?
Sorry, the depth of the garage?
Does it need to be 24 feet or?
I talked to the builder, and the cars that I have, and putting a snow blower in there, all that. He says that the smallest is 22. He goes, "That's, you're opening your door and it's banging on stuff."
I'm talking about the depth of the-
How far it goes in?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's basically saying, yeah. With the cars that I have and the snow blower, it's not that much.
22 feet is usually-
20 or 22.
22 is just like typical for a full-size car.
Yeah.
20 feet, you know, unless you got a freezer or something, you're gonna be in trouble.
All right, now if I want to do this, I'd like to hang some lights in the back of it, and I'd like to put a snow blower. Currently, I bring the snow blower out of the basement, bringing it up steps. And, you know, I don't like having gas in my basement, you know, it's just, you know, it's just not, it's just not safe.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Have you ever seen the historical commission? We support the position that the owner wants to go forward with.
Your name?
Actually restoring the property more closer to what it was back in the day as opposed to what it's in situation right now.
Great, thank you. Did you have a hand up? Did you have a question?
Oh, I'm with-
Oh, okay.
Also, I'm going for Bob's.
The barn itself is coming from Pennsylvania, it's Amherst built. So it's not gonna just be one of these, you know, slab kits. It's gonna, you know, we're spending money on it, it's gonna look very nice.
No quantum?
Well, it's gonna have big beams, it's gonna look very nice.
Do you have any, uh, proposed, like, uh, looks like?
They're drawing it out.
They're drawing it out?
I did have some drawings. No, I've got them right here.
Yeah, that's basically the one you have right there, that's what I have.
This one?
Yes.
No, no, that's a-
Maybe with the conservation-
Maybe, yeah, probably.
Yes, it did.
Normally, there's a-
We can submit something to the board from our other- This is actually the old postcard. They used to make postcards in different sections of the bowl.
Traffic doesn't look quite as bad. It was early in the morning when they took that.
Then there's a material breakdown. The copy of the concrete pad that we reworked. Basically, the pad. Sure.
How do you access the upstairs? How do you access the storage?
That's another reason why they have to go 24 by 24, the stairs are on the backside of it. So that, you know, if you went to 22 by 22-
Right, so the stairs are on the inside?
Yes, they're inside, yes.
Versus the door up top and the pulley?
They do sell those, I just, yeah. The driver's not big enough to support that.
We can submit a set of those, couple sets.
So this is pretty much locked down, this is pretty much the format of the-
That's what we, yeah, that went after, yeah, back and forth, that's what we went.
So if we were to grant the-
That's it.
Variants, we could say in substantial conformity to-
That's exactly it.
And provided the conservation commission is-
Right. Would there be any other concerns? Any other questions or comments from the audience? A motion to close the public hearing portion. Second, second, back, back. So all favor, close the public hearing. Is that right?
Aye.
So we have a good record in the application of the criteria for the variance. Where that can address the specific items for, which would be favorable to grant the variance. We consider plans, seems like the lot has certain challenges. Looks to be the best place part of it, and we restored the historical condition of the lot. So we're gonna go after a five-year, so.
The only place it can-
Right, it really is, it is a historical house and, you know-
Potentially alleviate some traffic concerns.
Right.
Kind of surprised your cars haven't been hit by somebody coming down the hill.
Well, they have.
Oh, they have.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the variance. With the condition that it be built in substantial conformity with the various plans that were provided. And I want to work the conservation-
I guess- I guess you could say that, I don't know.
I typically, I don't think you recommend that. I've got one board's approval, can I make a motion upon another board's approval? So I would not recommend doing that.
A motion to accept the variance application. Condition that we constructed in conform with substantial conformity plans provided.
Yeah, those are the plans, there's no changes to-
You may find sometimes that something has to be tweaked, so substantial conformity.
If you have to come back, we can be over there.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do that.
Give you a second, so all in favor of the motion to accept the variance application?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, I'll make sure I bring four or five sets of these copies.
Just tell her, you may not be that ready, but just-
I can, I can just print more off if you want to give those.
And we can also leave you this picture.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anything I have to sign?
No, so now that we have, we have the paper, so if it's, we don't have one, we have one. They offer a concurrence.
That's a couple of them. It's blue, but it's color. I think it's almost at eight, it's white, looks like a color.
Did you just file the question? Well, he's got two, maybe I'll say from you.
Was it the last one? No.
The last from Wednesday.
Oh, no, the little two, yeah. Yeah, one's gonna not be part anymore.
This is the one, still in the-
Still in his next, yeah.
Didn't we do that one before?
Now that was on Michael Hayden's 40B, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's not the same.
No.
Oh, I think it's on the other side. And it looks similar almost.
Yeah, I think, I think I have it bad.
It was, we had to sell it or something. So a little for time.
Good time.
Okay. So this next item is, it's not a hearing, it's just a business meeting to have an informal discussion of a potential 40B project consisting of eight units. On Stillwater Road or is it on Bond Hill?
Stillwater.
So Robert Pace and David Russell?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm Douglas Duchesne, I'm an attorney for Mr. Pace and Mr. Russell, so if you don't mind.
Sure.
Well, good evening.
How are you?
For the record, my name is Douglas Duchesne, I'm with the law firm of Duchesne and Farrell in Westford, Massachusetts, and I'm here this evening representing David Russell and Robert Pace, who are with us this evening. Along with Seth Donoghue, who is our engineer from Duchesne and Dillis.
Seth, I'm the director of that plan.
I'll take a quick, different, quick plan. And as you had stated, my clients are preparing to file a site eligibility request with Mass Housing for a proposed 40B or project pursuant to Mass General Law's attempt to 40B. The site is located off of Stillwater Road, as was stated a moment ago. It's actually the last, I believe, the last lot involved before you cross the Harvard Line as you're traveling out along Stillwater Road. The site is actually fairly sizable, at 6.6 acres in size. Currently, the site has been approved for a single-family home, and there are some wetlands out here and some natural heritage jurisdiction. So Natural Heritage has previously approved a work area that's actually marked by hay bales and all cleared out today. So you can see where the proposed work area is. We are working with Natural Heritage, we have to slightly expand that work area in order to get our access road in and to get the project cited. But it is not a significant change from the pre-approved work area that's in place today. We are proposing to build eight units. Six of those, they're actually eight units in four buildings, so as you can see, it's four duplex-style structures. We are proposing six two-bedroom units, and in conformance with state law, a minimum of 10% of the project has to be three bedrooms, you have no choice. So we are proposing two three-bedroom units. Of those eight units, one of the three bedrooms and one of the two bedrooms will be affordable. Unit sizes, the two bedrooms are approximately 15, 50 square feet, and the three-bedroom is 17, 50 square feet. So they're not small units by any means. We are proposing 24 parking spots, which equates to three per unit, two, which I believe is your minimum requirement, plus an additional one space per unit for visitor parking. So as I said, we are getting ready to file for site eligibility with Mass Housing. However, prior to doing so, we do like to meet with as many people in town in terms of boards and officials as we can, so that we can get feedback and an understanding of the town's needs and wants. We have met with Erica on a number of occasions, she's been gracious enough to give her her time. We've also had a technical review meeting where the project was discussed with various of your board and department heads, and now we're here with this board just to give you an informal overview, and I again want to thank you for taking the time to do that. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Ms. Donoghue to give you just a really quick, sort of the technical viewpoint of what's proposed, and then we would be happy to answer any questions you might have or any thoughts you might want to share.
So from just some of the 40B perspective from before that we had in town, so areas of wells, you know how they're gonna be, individual wells or one marked well, you know, sister, and things like that, you know, certainly if you had any ideas.
So I believe you have the blow-up plan on foot this round.
I have one question for you. It seems the building height's a three-story, which may be an issue with fire.
So we actually had a preliminary department meeting with everyone, unfortunately, the fire chief couldn't attend. That's something, we're gonna seek his feedback on that. There is a supplemental water supply, I believe, identified in the GIS on the opposite side of Stillwater Road, so we're fairly close to what's there.
It's an issue with the ladder truck.
Height as well, so we would seek his input on that. These are very preliminary at this point. One of the things we took into consideration when doing the preliminary layout of the site, we're basically grading up to the units, so that the back of the units is gonna be higher than the front. So from where, anywhere where the fire truck could access the units, we're gonna be much lower in the cul-de-sac area, and that's something we're working on, and we'll definitely seek his advice on that.
Yeah, I just brought it up.
One of the other things that came out of our preliminary discussions too was the question if we'd be willing to go to the design review board, and that is something that both Mr. Pace and Mr. Russell, the applicants, are willing to do. They would like this to blend with the surrounding area. And one of the big benefits of rising up to the units, we're basically gonna be masked from Stillwater Road. Well, those elevations do show certain heights on it. What you're actually gonna see from street level is gonna be less than that. And down the road, we can prepare elevations from a street view perspective, just to give everyone an idea of what's gonna be best.
Have you done any engineering testing on the site for the septic?
It does, so we have necessary testing for a fully compliant, single-family home system there that would be under all the local regs. We may be seeking some waivers as part of the 40B process to cite two septic systems essentially in the same spot, which is expanding the footprint slightly. Soil testing has been completed, and we will be utilizing that testing for it. Generally, up towards the road, the sandier soils were present, well-suited for the septic systems. As we have the site designed right now, we do have two separate wells located to the rear of the property to provide for the full required 100-foot well radius to all of our septic components, with the exception of the individual tanks and pump chambers, which don't have to meet that. But our leaching areas will be situated appropriately. They're both in the front of the site, and then all of our units are in the back. All the infrastructure will essentially come down our road, and then our road has been designed, it'll be technically a driveway designed to essentially road standards, and it'll allow for the fire truck to circulate through the site in a forward motion. It's very similar to some of the recent cul-de-sacs that the planning board has approved, and so we're taking that experience and applying it here. So we're not gonna just have a driveway where they have to make backing motions, where there'd be concern about parked vehicles blocking that. As Attorney Duchesne mentioned, we're providing both parking within the garages and then long enough driveways to provide for some stacked parking for any visitors or additional parking.
Is the proposed access road gonna be a public way or is there private?
No, this would remain private. One of the big things with this site, and it came out during our preliminary meetings, we're using, it's almost seven acres, 6.7, we're using about one acre in the central region here. So we're approximately 300 feet to any of our abiding properties from unit to unit. And through that area, we have a large area of existing trees to the north. This is the Harvard Town Line, actually. We have quite a large buffer to any other structures over there. So from a neighbor's standpoint, we're providing very large vegetated buffer that's gonna remain unchanged. This hatched area represents what Natural Heritage had previously designated as a meadow that would be maintained as such. There's blending turtles in the area, it can only be- There's outlanding turtles in the area. It can only be mowed at certain times of the year, so we're not going to have yards expanding into that area. As Attorney Duchesne mentioned, we're approaching Natural Heritage again. It's a slight deviation from what was approved before, so we would have to seek their approval again, and we'd be subject to any terms that they provide outside of this hearing. Were there any other site-specific things I can address?
Yeah, I actually live on Bon Hill Road, and I spend a lot of time walking past there during all seasons. It's kind of swampy down there in the springtime, and I'm wondering what provisions are made for any kind of wetlands or anything, because that space just seemed really unbuildable to me over the years.
Sure, the wetlands have been delineated as both the natural heritage process and through conservation with the permitting of the original single-family home that was there. We're not expanding out of there. We are filling for the road, and that's to allow stormwater infrastructure to be underneath the road. So, we will be infiltrating all storm events up to and including the 100-year storm on this site, so there'll be no impact to off-site conditions due to any of the runoff here. And that's something that would probably be subject to peer review as we move forward.
And if there are families in there, is there provision for like bus stop or?
Yeah, we would, we of course take any of those considerations in on that. I'd imagine that we're going to designate a school bus waiting area at the end. I don't imagine that the bus is going to want to come into the actual development.
Target there won't be, you know.
Yeah.
Similar to the 40B on Sugar Road, I think there was a targeted area for a drop-off or.
Yeah, like a waiting station.
Being that all the units are relatively centralized too, we're not dealing with a long walking area, or even the Sugar Road one is a little bit more spread out where there's.
Yeah, it's a bigger part, but.
It is.
The pace and point is that they have a designated area for people to collect that so that, you know.
We can certainly look into adding that.
Safely get off the road.
I'm not familiar with your bus routes, but does the bus tip, or would the bus typically turn at the line, at the Harvard Line?
Do they come around on the other side of the road? Do they come around?
Yeah, so when they get on, on, I'm at the corner of Bon Hill and Mashway, so this way we down to there, and buses do turn, and when I'm on the drive to work on Harvard Route in the morning, when the buses get to, right to the Harvard, Bolton, they do a U-turn on the property and come back in, so it helps drive through that.
So, where we're actually, and this is a driveway, we're not proposing this as a roadway of any kind in terms of for frontage or anything. That is just a driveway from a legal perspective. However, as Seth said, we're going to develop it, build it to meet your road standards. And I suspect, and we will work with the fire department and the school department, they may find that our road, given how wide it is and given the fact that it's on an amazingly straight way, you've got a phenomenal site distance system, they may actually decide to use that as their turn, you know, as sort of their official turnaround, because we are the last, would be the last stop in town.
They might, but I'll tell you, on my street, they, there's a roadway, they won't do that. They drive like another half a mile into Hudson.
Where they can turn.
No, they pull in on a road in Hudson and then back out rather than go on private property, because they, I assume it's a liability if you're the insurance, the insurance company.
Well, it's a very good. We'll check with the, sort of the operative thing would like to use it. Again, it's so straight there that the site distances are awesome.
Yeah, of course, you've got people coming down the hill out of Harvard, flying.
Flying. Well, again, we do intend to work closely with your fire department and your school department on those issues, and we actually have already, we're going to talk to them about the availability of sister firefighting supply.
Because all those things will come into play with the public hearing.
We try and get, I think, a head start on all those things, so that we, you know, by the time we come to this board, which theoretically will be some number of months from now, because we still have photos taken, we do try and work through all of those things so that we come, when we come back, we can say, this is what the fire department has asked us to do.
Because one of the things they'll also be concerned with will be the width of the distance between the properties, so that, say, if they were to be firing one, they're not too close to the next set of units we had that should come up on.
I think access between the units too is another issue, which may come up, you know, if they have to get in between two units, how are they going to access it with a truck?
That's, that's amazing. So, they'll look at some of that spacing, and that may come into play a lot, but something that will.
I missed it. How many bedroom units are these?
Six of them are two-bedroom.
All right.
Two are three-bedroom.
And where would that, which would those be?
We haven't identified, but I can tell you that the three bedrooms that we wanted, you want, would you potentially put the two three-bedroom units in one building, or would it be a two or a three?
Probably a two or three.
Yeah, so we would split them up so that the threes would be, you know, there wouldn't be two threes in a single building. We will also be required to separate out the affordable units.
Now, would the affordables be two-bedroom or three-bedroom?
One of them will be a two-bedroom, one will be a three-bedroom, and they can't be in the same building.
Right.
You know, the state will tell us how to mix them so that you don't concentrate.
And is the square foot the same whether it's a two-bedroom or three-bedroom?
No, the three-bedroom, the two-bedrooms are about 15, 50, and the three-bedrooms are an additional 200 square feet, so slightly larger. The other thing I wanted to mention is, and we have started this discussion, and again, I don't, I apologize, I don't have the experience with this board on a 40B, but there is available through Mass Housing, a grant for zoning boards for towns. When a 40B is proposed, they are, there's a $10,000 grant available to the board to be used to hire a 40B consultant, who essentially would come in and work with you and help. And, you know, to be quite honest, we find that it's great because it just brings in another professional into the team. The whole group helps us work with you, and they're free, and I don't believe I've ever heard of a town not getting it. It's essentially if you ask for it, you get it, and then you're allowed to hire one of the, you know, approved consultants on the list, and so we will work with you and your planning staff to, if you need some assistance in getting that. But something I'd suggest, it's out there.
We use them.
Oh, you have? Okay, great.
So, we had a, particularly the larger developments we have, so we did Masharm on one of them.
I know it better.
So, you know, so we've taken.
Sure, so you've done it. Okay, great. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but.
No, but it's.
Always like to bring it up.
It's a reminder, because, you know, it can be helpful.
I thought it would be a great option, which I may be on my journey lead when this comprehensive permit comes in, so.
It's really going to help, and I respect it.
Yeah, help with making decisions.
I think the willingness to look at the design review board would be important as well.
Okay.
I think that'll be it.
Yep, we've already committed to do that.
So, would the board like to turn to the designer review board now, so that way they can kind of get their ducks in a row, go to them, and then if the design review board has recommendations for site plan changes, they can do it now versus later? I mean, I would think that'd help.
Sure.
And save you guys money by doing it now.
The sooner the better, we'll.
Would that be something the board would be open to, or?
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to be involved, I think it makes sense to have them do it now.
That's what I think.
They haven't been involved in any of the ones we've done, have they?
It's not wired. They're just trying to cut them down, cut them through.
But you're right. I mean, now would be the time to do it, because they've got something that.
Yeah.
They want to see different rather than letting you guys go through.
Ping-ponging back.
They've been there, it's no fun.
It just weakens the process for, because of 40B, it'll all come through here to the ZVA, and then we'll have to solicit inputs in if there's traffic studies or if there's design reviews that happen, to anything that can be done, you say, oh, here it is, I have it, and we've got to the renovation board or whatever, it just, it's a process goes faster.
We're happy to do that.
Do you mind just taking a vote on that, and then that way I just have a sort of mark for it, so I can sure there's a design review for it?
So, sure. So, motion to. Encourage or require, is it?
Yeah, it's, I guess encouraged, yeah.
Encourage you not to get to, avail itself of the design review board review of the project.
Second.
Right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Unless you have any other questions, thank you very much for your time. We look forward to seeing you in some number of months. Thank you. Thank you.
So, James?
Yes, I'm James.
Okay, so, so just for the viewing audience, we have a James Moore in South Bolton Road, parcel 2C-15.1, and we're going to have an informal discussion of a potential 40B project consisting of 12 units.
What we've talked about working with Seth and Ducharme is, we want to try to, and I met with Erica when I bought this parcel about a year ago, and she was talking to me about how Bolton has a need to diversify the housing stock and take into account the taxpayer burden at the same time. So, when I was thinking about the site, I picked it around, and one of the things I began to like when I looked at the site is, it seems very suitable for an active adult kind of small neighborhood. One of the things I would hope to achieve would be to put a moderate-priced home in the 2,000-square-foot range, would be single-story, and two-bedroom. We looked at the soils on the site, and the soils are all standing gravel, so very, we should be able to meet all the environmental regulations we would need to meet.
Have you done any testing?
Yeah, we've done about 60 test holes out there.
So, it's old gravel?
Yeah, it's an old gravel pit. We purchased, my wife and I purchased a property up on Azoli Family. They were using it stored, so we use it for storage, I guess, when we built 495. So, we've been cleaning it up quite a bit. The Bon Azolis, before they handed it over doors, cleaned it up quite a bit, so we've been constantly trying to make sure the site is clean and free. So, that's what we were thinking about, if the planning board would entertain like a LIP process or something with our engineer and my wife and I, to see if they would entertain some type of alternative housing for the site.
And I'll just introduce the site a little bit more. Jim and I have spoken at length about a couple of options here, and what we've looked at doing is doing cul-de-sac-style road, obviously, but really set the bulk of the project back from the road so that it would have that small neighborhood feel. One of the things Jim has been open to, and we've discussed quite a bit, is the possibility of incorporating some small trails to route it, give it more of a rural look. It would be targeted for older home buyers, and probably you'd be open to doing something like a first-floor master bedroom, or restriction to have that to diversify the housing stock. And we give each, each unit is going to have a small yard area, but overall, the neighborhood as a whole would allow for a lot more options for everybody that's there.
So, when you say adult community, are you saying age-restricted, or is it like a 55?
Yes, I would entertain an age restriction.
What is the total acreage proposed?
We're just under five. The assessor has it at five. I think the actual survey math when it comes in is form change.
I purchased five, but I don't think I got all of five.
Yeah, I guess the density is a little bit.
It was, it was a piece of land that had been cut out, cut out, cut out, and this is the last bit, so a lot of the surrounding properties came from the backing deeds over time.
Yeah, I was surprised to see 12 units on five acres anyway.
I think the neat thing about the changing the housing stock a little bit is, we're comfortable at this point that we can meet all the environmental regulations and go for no variances. It will be well-suited for septic and groundwater recharge. All our stormwater will be at that density and with that type of soil, it's ideal site to do what we're trying to do.
You can, you can keep your stormwater on site?
Yes, yeah. It is, it's an ideal site. I've been around it, and I've been around the development for almost 30 years now, and it is an ideal site for what we're showing there.
Are they all single-family homes?
Excuse me?
They're all single-family homes?
These would be all single-family homes, yes. Yeah, we want to do like an adult house, single-story, give somebody kind of a condo alternative where if they want to garden their own yard, you know. We did want to put a walking trail all the way around. I don't know, did you put that on there yet?
I have it on another one.
So, they would all link, you know, and we envision if the, you know, that we put some kind of building up for a small exercise area, swimming pool, maybe a putting green type of thing.
So, what are the sizes of these homes?
They, they would range from 2,000 to 2,200 square foot, nothing over 24.
Single-story?
Single-story, yeah.
Okay.
So, maybe this is more like a Bulb Woods way.
Ideally, each unit would have provisions for a garage, though, so there'd be covered parking for all residents. And what we actually have not applied for a comprehensive permit, that's something that Jim has spoke about. It's one of the options we've looked at. As sized right now, we have septic systems that would meet the nitrogen loading requirements for the active adult community, so there, as you mentioned, there would be any type of waiver or even treatment provided for that. It would be in full compliance with the board health requirements for that. And I think one of the things that he really wanted to approach the board prior, one to introduce the project, and the other thing is to see if there was any interest in pursuing it possibly as a LIP, if it had some type of age restriction component or kind of an alternative housing component to it, so that instead of being the regular 40B where we have 25% of our units are going to be affordable rest market rate, he'd be willing to look at a couple other options for doing something outside of that process in concert with the town. And of course, we're not looking for any commitments to that now. It's more to show you what we're, what road we're headed down, and we've eventually put together a list of waivers that would be required. There would be some to the subdivision. And one of our goals is to meet zoning setbacks to all of the abutting properties, so in theory, any house that could be there could be just as close to any of these neighbors' properties as we're showing here. Internally, our units will be much closer, but to all of our surrounding properties, we're going to provide the same by right zoning setback that we have.
If you were doing this as a LIP, would you still have at least a 25% affordable?
Yes, yes, and possibly other restrictions to the units. We've talked, do you want to speak to the resale of the project as a whole?
Yeah, we, you know, again, when I talked to Erica a long time ago, she's the one who kind of gave me an idea to start to look at something like this to keep affordability units in town, and there was an article that came out in the Boston Globe, I don't know if you all saw it or not, it talked about, you know, giving somebody something to downsize to that could free up the larger homes in town and help the families out. So, that's what we've been trying to do, is we'd be willing to keep them affordable any way we can. So, you know, we would be able to talk with this board in the future about what we could dream up, how do we keep them from, you know, like Seth brought to my attention, what if somebody wanted to come in and pay astronomical dollars or something, you know, we would try to limit it that way. But we, we're cognizant of that. We need to be careful that we don't narrow the market to somebody, nobody wants to buy them because they're so restricted.
The issue that we've come up with is, with limited alternative housing stock, somebody goes to downsize, they may have some sizable assets and there's one or two homes to choose from, they offer $50,000 over asking price, and then all of a sudden, everybody else in the community says, hey, if I can get $50,000 over asking, everything starts going up and up and up, and then it's no longer really affordable to a regular.
Is that the lip similarly, would it be handled through the ZBA?
It would be a submission of a comprehensive permit. The only really difference with the lip is that the town works jointly with the developer and essentially it's the board to select them that would provide sort of a letter of support to the HCD saying that we support this and we're not going to prevent it from sort of moving forward or hinder it in some, you know, in an awful way. That's my understanding.
So it's still its file as a comprehensive permit? It's still, the hearing is still managed under the 40B statute?
Yes, that's my understanding. Is that current statute?
Yes, there, we go through the same, it would be subject to coverage. There'd be waivers, it's, there's just a lot more open discussion in the waiver process where we would spell out some, there may be some back and forth in some of them versus we give you a waiver list and, yeah, the town, if you have amended 10%, then Mass Housing says that the presumption is that the local need overrides many of the town's interests in this.
It'll still get negotiated though?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
It's still, to have a, from experience, to have a application go through, even though, that's right, the presumption is you don't have 10%, you know, but there is give and take on.
Absolutely.
To ensure that it's done properly and that it's not a red rap over the town.
No, it's, we go through the whole peer review, groundwater, partly to higher degree of the region, a family home in this case. Jim's building a house in town too. He's expressed a large interest to make it a nice looking development.
Yeah, I live in town. I sold my home in Belmont, currently rent, and I tried to rent something in Bolton, couldn't find anything. I looked for a long time. I'm renting in Hudson right now, building up an old trail. So, I mean, I grew up at the International at Caddy, so I always loved Bolton, my Clinton, Clinton, Clinton time, so very familiar with the area.
We won't hold that against you.
I was thinking the same thing.
We'll try not to.
So I think what we'd like to do is just kind of spell out what waivers we'd be looking for in moving through this process before going towards a state approval letter of many sorts and be able to come back here and spell some of this out a little bit more refined and see if that's something that the town would be interested in pursuing. We'd be happy to meet with both the design review board and selectmen ahead of time as well if it's appropriate.
I think it would be helpful for the town from the design review side, getting involved in that stuff.
I did talk to the town administrator about whether or not to go before Borisla could formally and really he said at this point, the board is likely to be looking for direction from you guys first, so. So I think if, you know, the town.
It gets bounced around.
If the town, I know, I know. So if the town were to entertain them, they'd want to argue with you guys, so.
But if it was to be a lip?
It has, I know the letter is specifically from the board's election. But because you're reviewing it, that's just what the term is.
Well, we're, the board will have to review a 40B, whether it's a comprehensive permit, 40B or a lip, so.
Right.
But if a local initiative project, you know, emphasis on local initiative and if the board or selectmen think that they want to support that, then they should come, they should do a letter of support to it, to tell, you know, which way, right? I mean.
They might feel that they don't have the experience looking at it. I mean, they're more generalists than.
Yeah, they have a lot of experience.
We certainly thought we could do too, like, you know, we could go through the design review board process. We could have another informal meeting with you guys where we talk about the list of waivers and then the plan and comments. And then at that point, I can at least give that information.
Give that presentation to us.
The administrator and then Borisla can review it at that point. They may feel comfortable at that point.
Because we have no other, we could be as comfortable or less comfortable as them at the same point, they could have the same documents and.
Yeah, we're not, we're just looking at it as the project.
Are they concerned with building new construction within a 100-foot buffer zone?
One of the waivers, we would be seeking some waivers from Conservation Commission. We do have very limited structures there, stormwater will be managed in full compliance with Mass Stormwater Standards. And as part of the lip process, we could certainly look at realigning portions of that accessway or increasing the buffer there.
I mean, it looks like 12 could be, could be moved a little bit to get it out of it. That unit three is predominantly within that buffers zone.
We're working.
It just jumps out at me.
They're rather generic footprints at this point too, so we may have a variety of housing in there too where there could be some different sized units that we could place in different places to add better vegetative buffers if needed. And that would be all part of the open discussion going through it. And one of the big things I came up with it being possibly an age restricted site is that both in not having a supermarket or many services, this is very close to, well, it's out of town, some of the newer development in Hudson, so it's very accessible to things that would be needed by a small neighborhood like this. And I think what we'd like to do is just kind of give a synopsis of the overall site design in a letter to your board and then a list of preliminary waivers so we can kind of see if there's anything that the board may not be comfortable with or may want us to consider otherwise, we'd like to have that discussion.
Yeah. I mean, because the waivers will probably touch on potential setbacks, so only, I mean, planning, conservation, you know, water health, so, you know, whatever, whatever came to us, we probably have to get that out in front of them.
Absolutely.
We individually as one board wouldn't necessarily be able to give full guidance.
No.
I think we would have to start a process to sort of get some informed feedback from the others.
If it went the route of a lip too, we could either approach them individually or we could have a joint meeting if any of those boards would be available as well.
So this is three lots all joined together, right?
Correct, so there'd be three separate wells.
Okay.
Three separate septic systems. There'd be a blanket condominium association that would be responsible for the road maintenance, stormwater maintenance, private way again, so there's, there's no impact.
Okay.
To the overall visitor.
You've got to go in the other way.
Oh, they do. It's not locked, they just don't turn the air.
You know, just set up the firewall.
We could get a fire coming out.
Really?
I mean, because all those. I only have, I was going to say, I only have one question. Yeah, I assume you guys would like to, we had the well in that little position back there.
Top corner.
Have you checked the other septic systems? Because back, I use this axe, this is going back 30 years, so I'm not exactly sure. We use this to build three septic systems back in this corner that are on the lots off of Bon Hill Road. And it seems to me they're pretty close to where you've shown that well location.
We'll check.
Check.
Off of Bon Hill Road?
I'm not Bon Hill Road.
South Paul.
No, the other road.
I missed that. What was your comment?
No, I was thinking about, I was considering, they showed a well back here and I know there's a group of septic systems that were installed back here, three of them.
Okay.
The three of the houses that are on, I can't.
That road over there?
I've lived in Bolton my entire life, but I can't remember. My old age is really starting to set. The road that goes up here, yeah.
Well, this is Spectacle.
Spectacle Hill Road, yeah, Spectacle Hill Road. So it's, I think it's these three lots, one, two, actually, this one is vacant in that lot. So this septic system and these two were way down and back, because you couldn't access them from Spectacle Hill Road, so we came in through the gravel pit to build those. They were like in the back corner of where the gravel pit was.
We'll check that, make sure that that's all.
And Seth, you also mentioned that you potentially could move some of the units towards the road frontage so that you could meet the record.
Yeah, our intent again would be to meet all of the zoning setbacks to all of the surrounding properties. So the first house would be offset appropriately from South Bolton Road, exactly as we would be required if we were putting one single family home there. There'd be no waiver to that. The only thing we'd be looking for is internally. And so we'll make sure that any layout, they'd be dimensioned and we'll accommodate all of those. We'll table form on the plan that would show. I think at this point, since we are preliminary, we do appreciate your time, but we should probably summarize some of these things and, yeah.
So similar to the prior here, so have they, are they going to the design review board or would we do a recommendation to go to the design review board?
Yeah, so it would be a recommendation because they're not required, so it would be a courtesy that the other people would agree to.
I don't think we're quite there yet though.
I was going to say, I don't know.
Yeah, we have a little bit more site design and things to vet out before.
Maybe it's a necessity.
I think unless there's any other questions, we kind of have our path in front of us now.
Sounds good.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you have Jack run and tell us where the septic is? It's a lot of work back there. It was over 30 years ago, so it's quite a while.
Young lad. So most of that fell from 495?
No, no, it wasn't, it was a gravel pit that, I don't know when it was dug out. They did use it, they stored equipment there when they were building 495. So, I mean, it was filled with all kinds of, you know, old bulldozers and man. Probably could have made a fortune just selling the steel that was in there to get rid of it all. They dumped some, they had some stuff there though. There was, isn't that where that Bonzles had a bunch of cobblestones and stuff, right? Peter's though. Not so much, that was down off of Hudson Road. They had a place like that was filled with cobblestones. All the old roads that got out. Yeah, yeah, roads and pieces of pipe and. I have some, I have some in my area. Yeah, I used to go down with it. Buckle piece, I'm like, I'm locking it in my ear.
Taking some coffee.
So is it a clean site?
Yeah, it's pretty clean, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, I was kind of surprised when I saw that they were going to do that because, you know, they were offering it for sale. It's a single family lot, but, you know.
If Eric had to go bottom.
Okay. Do we want to kill the, maybe?
Take the cable?
I guess they don't want to play.
It's this executive session?
You should go into a executive session.
So I guess the motion to close the public hearing and the business meetings?
Second?
That's all in favor?
All right.
Okay.